Okay. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order, please. Mrs. Andriani sends her regards. She will not be here tonight, so I will be sitting in for her. And Mrs. Hopman also will not be here. She had a family emergency. Let's get started, please. Statement of adequate notice by Board Acting President pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10:4-10, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided, excuse me, by advertising such notice in the home news commune, the board office, the schools, and on Cablevision Channel 118 and Verizon Files Channel 24, and by filing such notice with the township clerk. This meeting was scheduled for Tuesday, February 18th, 2014. The Board will take formal action on agenda items. Mr. Mara?
The Olbridge Township Board of Education acknowledges that the law of this state establishes that members of the public, including members of the Board, have the right to record public Board meetings using audio or video recording devices, provided that the act of recording does not interfere with the business of the public Board meeting. Therefore, the Board makes it known that any such recording is to be considered the private recording of the individual and in no manner represents the official record of this Board. The Board therefore takes no responsibility for such private recording and completely disavows any future use.
Roll call, Mr. Mara.
Borsili?
Here.
De Prima?
Here.
Dunn?
Here.
Hopman?
Mongan?
Here.
Singh?
Yes.
Silikowski?
Weber?
Here.
Andriani? Quarm exists.
If we could all rise for the pledge, please. Everyone remain standing, please, for a moment of silence. Move the Board acknowledge the passing of Jane Dunn, retired accounts payable clerk, and Alice Grace Sully, retired noon hour supervisor, and express our deepest sympathy to their family and friends. At our last meeting, we added something new to the agenda. It's called the Code of Ethics. It's a highlight of the month, reminding us why we are all up here, and Mr. Frank Weber volunteered to read it each month. Frank, please.
Code of Ethics Corner Highlight of the Month: Every Board Member Will uphold and enforce all laws, rules, and regulations of the State Board of Education and court orders pertaining to schools. Desireed changes shall be brought about only through legal and ethical procedures in accordance with NJSA 18A:12-24-1. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. Just so you know, the PTSA made up a new word. It's voluntold. So you kind of volunteer and are told at the same time. I'm sorry. I'd like to make a motion to accept the addendum to the agenda for February 18, 2014. Need a motion, please?
Colonel will make that motion to accept the addendum.
And second?
Mongan will second.
Roll call, Mr. Mara. Oh, discussion? Please forgive me. This is my first time doing this. Discussion, anyone? Roll call, Mr. Mara.
Borsili?
Yes.
De Prima?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Mongan?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
The motion to accept the addendum passes. Mr. De Prima, there are some administrative corrections to the agenda that I'd like to announce.
Yes, sir.
To the Board members, all the administrative changes have been reflected on your agenda, and they are in yellow. And to members of the public, the administrative changes to the agenda are on a document that's in the back of the room. They've been distributed to all of you. Thank you, Mr. De Prima.
I just checked with council, and it's okay to do this. We're going to go a touch out of order tonight. Before recognition, we have two or three guest speakers who just want to mention something real quick about a couple of events coming up, and not to keep them here all night. I'm going to ask Mr. I don't know if Larry or Karen Redman going first? Both of you? Larry Redman has something to say about the Relay for Life.
Hi, my name is Larry Redman, and I'm here tonight to say a little bit about Olbridge Relay for Life. For those of you who don't know what it is, this is our 50-year anniversary of the Olbridge Relay for Life. It is the largest fundraiser in the world for cancer. It's sponsored by the American Cancer Society, and I've actually worn my shirt on cruises, and people on islands have said, hey, we had one of those. Did you come to ours? Anyway, this is our fifth anniversary, and up to now, in the previous four years, we've raised almost $200,000 here in Olbridge. Money that gives people rides, it gives them places to stay, and family members places to stay during their chemo, all kinds of different things. And Dr. Sedidino has been kind enough to, no, I promoted you, Mr. Sedidino, has been kind enough to help us out. He's always helped us out. He stayed. He has fun. He makes sure that the people who've worked with him through the years have come and had fun, and he's just been great. And this year, we're trying to get into all the schools. We had a couple elementary schools last year, Voorhees, Carpenter, Sharah. Sharah raised over $2,000, nickels and dimes that elementary school kids saved up. Carpenter filled little water bottles with nickels and dimes, and they raised a lot of money. Voorhees raised a lot of money. So we're trying to get all the schools involved. We're trying to get, you know, a lot of stuff going in the high school. We have a kickoff celebration, which is going to be here in the cafeteria on the 12th of March. It starts at 6:30 PM. Everyone's invited. There'll be flyers going out, so, you know, the people at home, survivors. Everybody knows somebody who's been touched by cancer. You know, maybe it's a family member, maybe it's a friend, and maybe it's yourself. I happen to be a cancer survivor. In July, I'll be in remission four years. I had a stem cell transplant in 2010. We have a team. We're the looking-for lifesavers. There's some members of our committee here and lots of people. We've still got some empty chairs if people want to join our committee. I'll also be posting, you know, on there. We're on Facebook and Twitter, and Dave tells me that he's got a lot of followers on his tweets. So we're at @OBRelayforLife, that's on Twitter, and @OldBridgeRelayforLife on Facebook. So we're hoping that you can come out and join us in the cafeteria on March 12th. I just said that. That's one of the effects of chemo, short-term memory loss. All right, and thank you for putting me up. David, thank you for all the help you've been giving us. He's been wonderful. You know, I don't care what anybody says. He's been great. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Mr. Redman. If anybody has not been to this event, I've been there the past two or three years, and it's really a great event for a great cause, so whatever you could do to help. Mr. Redman will probably stay around for a few minutes if anybody has any questions. Next, Mrs. Forster, going to talk a little bit about the Glass Slipper Project. You've probably heard me talk about it for the past couple of years.
Great. Hi, thanks very much. I'm Kelly Ellis Forster, and I want to talk about an event that will be our third year. It's called the Glass Slipper Project. It's something we started a couple of years ago that will help high school students with going to prom by providing new and slightly new dresses and accessories and tuxedos. This year, because we were able to get a space in the grade nine center, thanks to Principal Dolan, we have much easier access to all the dresses. So in addition to offering this to the high school kids, we're able to offer this to the eighth-grade students for their eighth-grade dance. So we're working with the PTA president, so you all know our amazing PTA council and the presidents who are helping us. We have drop-off locations, if anybody wants to do donations, in the attendance office at the high school. We have a fabulous community partner, an investor bank, and their branch that is down by the Parkway exit, by Wood 21, at Madelon and Lawrence Harbor, they're collecting for us. And we will run this on March 15th and 16th. If there's a need because of the easy access to the dresses, we can run them later in the year or even on the weeknights. So again, the central administration has always been extremely supportive. The principals have been extremely supportive. Mr. De Prima, before he was on the Board of Ed, spent many hours taking dresses off racks, into cars, into cars, off racks, up to storage units. So it is, please come and help now because we just have to roll them out at our door. So we just wanted to let everybody know about this. We especially want to get the word out to the parents and the students who might need the assistance. There is no charge, and we have a beautiful selection, so we just wanted to create some more awareness. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Once again, this is another great cause. It's one of the other many great things going on in Olbridge. Thank you, Mr. Redman and Mrs. Forster. I have to back up one minute. I did forget the approval of minutes. I apologize. Move the Board to approve the following minutes. Organization meeting of January 7th, agenda session of January 14th, regular meeting of January 23rd, enclosed session of January 23rd. Mr. Mara, please. Do I have a motion to approve, accept the minutes, please?
Mongan will move the motion.
Second?
Borsili will second.
Mr. Mara, roll call.
Borsili?
Yes.
De Prima?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Mongan?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Weber?
No vote.
Motion passes.
Thank you, everyone. Onto recognition. I believe Mr. Sedidino is going to speak about that.
Thank you. The first recipient under recognition, number one, is Gabriella Bordenabi. While there is a slew of young ladies here tonight, I do not see any eighth graders here. And if Gabriella is not here, we will recognize her publicly at this meeting, but if she's available to attend another one of our Board meetings, we'll bring her back because what she did was extra special. Move the Board to recognize Gabriella Bordenabi. She's an eighth-grade student at Jonas Salk Middle School for her efforts in organizing a school fundraiser to support a four-year-old resident who is currently battling stage four neuroblastoma. The response was overwhelming from the staff and students at Jonas Salk School. They raised over $620 to assist the family during this very difficult time. Gabby's genuine passion and desire for helping the others was very inspirational. She's a role model to all of our schools and our community. Thank you, Gabby, and if you're available to come back for another meeting, we'll be delighted to have you. Our second recognition, I'm going to have Captain Weiss from our police department come up with Rocco Salantano, our supervisor of all things language arts and social studies, to honor one of our students in the 12th grade at Olbridge High School. Move the Board of Education to recognize Sahar Akbarzadeh, a 12th grade student at Olbridge High School. Sahar was an essay contest winner for the 25th Annual Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Breakfast, which was sponsored by the YMCA of Western Monmouth County.
Good evening. Recently, the Western Monmouth County YMCA held a contest, and in that contest, they recognized an Olbridge High School senior. Here to discuss and to tell us a little bit about the award and to present the award to Sahar Akbarzadeh is a Board of Directors member from the Western County, Western Monmouth County YMCA, Captain Bob Weiss.
Darkness cannot drive out darkness. Only light can do that. Hate cannot drive out hate. Only love can do that. Spoken by Dr. Martin Luther King, these words personify the Olbridge High School student I have been asked to introduce this evening. President De Prima, Mr. Sedidino, Mr. Salantano, Board of Education and citizens of Olbridge, thank you for the honor of presenting for recognition a young woman, an Olbridge High School student, who is a first-generation American. Her parents came from a nation torn by war, corruption, intolerance, and poverty. She recently visited her parents' homeland and returned inspired to dedicate her life to improving the lives of the people of Afghanistan. She is the finest example of the students of the Olbridge Public Schools, and it is my distinct privilege to present Sahar Akbarzadeh, the winner of the Western Monmouth County YMCA's Martin Luther King Jr. Essay Contest. I think that after she reads her essay, that you will agree, like Dr. King, she is a testament of hope.
On February 4th, 1968, Martin Luther King Jr. delivered a speech at Ebenezer Baptist Church where he spoke these inspiring words. Everybody can be great because anybody can serve. You don't have to have a college degree to serve. You don't have to make your subject and verb agree to serve. You only need a heart full of grace, a soul generated by love. Forty-five years later, the message in Dr. King's speech hasn't been extinguished. I have followed in Dr. King's footsteps, not only to improve the welfare of the local community, but the international community as well. My journey started in October of 2011. At the age of 16, without a college degree, I set out on my journey for social reform. I was on a mission, a mission to shed light on a group of people who were kept hidden in the shadows. It was October of 2011, and I was in one of the most dangerous countries in the world. I was in my homeland of Kabul, Afghanistan. I had nothing but a video camera and a journal for documentation. Those were my weapons, and I planned to use those weapons to expose the true story of the Afghan people, a story about destitution and sacrifice, a story that shaped my future. When I walked into a village on my second day in Afghanistan, I didn't know what to expect. Inside the village, I witnessed a suffering and inhumanity inflicted upon people. Children ran barefoot. Their tattered clothing hung loosely on their emaciated bodies due to the lack of food and nutrition they had. Their feet were black with dirt, crusted with calluses due to the labor they performed. Soon, a group of children became my tour guides into their war-torn village. Making our way to the center of the village, I was astounded by what I saw. The drinking water from the well was green, contaminated with bacteria and other unknown objects. Their homes were built out of mud and clay, horribly shaped to resemble a house. However, what really struck me was their school, which was really just a tent held together by stones at the bottom. Damaged chairs and desks were carelessly tossed into the tent, and four candles lit up the whole room. There was no chalkboard, school utensils, anything. I imagined waking up every day to this kind of lifestyle. An icy shudder went down my spine as I tried to remove the notion from my head. At that moment, I realized something, how different their childhood was from mine. They were restricted by societal and cultural limitations on their path to success, but I wanted to show these children that they too could have a different lifestyle. Education was the key to this issue. The following summer, I interned with New Jersey Senator Sam Thompson. I proposed to him my plan of creating a nonprofit organization to provide school supplies to this village. A couple of months later, the Hope Foundation of Afghanistan was established. This organization works to provide these children with school supplies, clothing, and shoes. Our long-term goal is to establish a school there. Visiting Afghanistan and creating my own nonprofit organization brought about various beneficial changes in my life. The YMCA character values of caring and responsibility, which was instilled in me, allowed me to make the change and the difference that I wanted to. I could have easily overlooked those events in Afghanistan, but instead, I rose and embraced the challenge by adhering to the core values of the YMCA. People always ask me, why do I interfere in a country marked by so much danger and so much violence? I'm always able to find an answer, thanks to the YMCA. Social responsibility and youth development is our duty. Every time I watch the footage that I took in Afghanistan, it helps emphasize why I took on such a challenge, in order to give a new life to a child whose destiny would have otherwise been written for them. Thank you.
Sahar, I just want to present you with the certificate.
Oh, thank you.
I, for one, I am humbled by your rise above obstacles and the way you've destroyed stereotypes shaped by ignorance. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Move the Board of Education to recognize both Mr. Remsum Strobb of Strobb Motors and Mr. Robert Little of Tom's Ford, members of the Monmouth County Dealers Association, for their $9,884.28 donation from the Tom Fords, towards the Olbridge High School Automotive Program. At this point, I'm going to invite the supervisor of everything industrial arts and career services, Ms. Karen Hicks.
Thank you, Mr. Sedidino. Tonight, we are recognizing Tony Nioni of CTR Towing and Recovery for the free removal of the wheel alignment rack and delivery to Saraval High School. Steve Pasqua had contacted a local tow truck company to ask for assistance in removing the old wheel alignment rack, which was donated to Saraval High School. When we requested a price from Tony, he was kind enough to say, no cost. So he and two of his workers hauled out the equipment on a flatbed and delivered it to Saraval at no cost. Needless to say, Mr. Pasqua was excited that he saved the district $400. I stopped in to see Tony and his crew move the wheel alignment rack out, and it was quite a well-orchestrated endeavor, and we thank you for your assistance. Tony?
Thank you. It was my pleasure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Sedidino and everyone else. Before we move on, I'd just like to say, Sahar, is that how you say it? Congratulations. I think I could speak for everybody up here when we say we're very proud to have you as a student in our school district. Thank you. Okay. I need a motion to accept the recognition, items one through four, please. Second?
Colonel will second recognition.
Mr. Mara, roll call, please.
De Prima?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Mongan?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Borsili?
Yes.
Motion's pass.
Okay, next is a report of student representative, Mr. Simone, please.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Christopher Simone. I'm the president of Olbridge High School, and I'm going to be giving this month's student report. This month and this week, actually, Olbridge High School has been focusing on our Freeze Out. Freeze Out is going to be a new thing this year that we hope to start, and it's in the spirit of the polar plunge that myself and my other fellow students and peer leaders will be doing at the Seaside Boardwalk this Saturday. The polar plunge is where we all go down to Seaside Boardwalk, and we get sponsors and people to donate money, and we plunge in the Atlantic Ocean in freezing water. And all the proceeds and benefits, all the proceeds benefit the Special Olympics, which is held in New Jersey this year. So it's really something that is affecting our community, considering our high school has students who will be competing in Special Olympics. So that's something that we're really focusing on. So Freeze Out came about when a few teachers decided that they wanted to create a second Pink Out. And Pink Out, as we all know, is a huge event that is school-wide, town-wide, and it really benefits people in the community who have been affected by breast cancer and also the Susan G. Komen Foundation. Well, Freeze Out is going to be something in a similar fashion, which will take place all day on Friday, and will benefit the Special Olympics. We will be selling shirts. Brought one with me. The shirts are $5 for students and $6 for teachers, and the design on the front was actually designed by a fellow student in my class. Zara Khan drew the design, and she really is working hard with the polar plunge and the Freeze Out. So also on the Freeze Out, we'll be selling beads. There'll be a photo booth set up, a DJ in the cafeteria. Blue and white is going to be our theme, so we're really getting the whole school into it. Another thing that just happened, it was on Monday, we had a president's council meeting, which is where a president or representative from every club, society, organization, and team in the school comes, and we had an American Cancer Society rep, which Mr. Redman spoke about before. The rep talked about Relay for Life on June 21st at Lombardi Field in Olbridge, and we decided to get all the clubs and societies and organizations informed early so we can get everyone involved, as many people as we can. Last week, we had a senior scholarship meeting for all the seniors of Olbridge High School who are eligible for receiving a senior scholarship. This year, one of the juniors of Olbridge, John Shammis, designed a website, which is obhsch scholarships.org, where it kind of brought us to the 21st century, and the whole scholarship applying process is now done online via website. He completely designed this website himself, and it's on. All students, it's very user-friendly. All students were able to input all their information and apply everything right there, so we thanked John Shammis for that. The talent shows this Thursday, sponsored by the Class 2015. And talking a little bit about sports this past Saturday, four of my teammates did something pretty extraordinary. Alex Leto, Hazem Iawad, Marcus Hernandez, and Jason Gilbert ran in the Millrose Games in the New York City Armory. The Armory is one of the most prestigious indoor tracks in the country and one of the fastest tracks, and the Millrose Games is a professional meet, which they qualified through running in trials and hitting standards to run at. And at the Millrose Games, the 4x400-meter relay hit a time of 318.98. This time won the meet, set a meet record, was second in the U.S. this year and second in New Jersey this year, 10th fastest time in New Jersey for high school history. So it's pretty extraordinary that they could do that. Leto will be competing for the University of Maryland next year on an athletic scholarship, and Marcus Hernandez is in contact with Rutgers University to be competing there next year as well. So that's what's going on this month in Olbridge. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Great news and great work, as always. Mrs. Sedidino, superintendent's report?
Thank you, and great job, Christopher. In the early part of January, Saturday morning, this Board of Education, members of my administrative team, gathered to work with this New Jersey School Boards Association on developing district goals. It was a very worthwhile experience. There was a lot of collaboration and a very collegial, I guess, environment where everybody worked together for the betterment of Olbridge schools. Tonight, I want to take the time to share with you those goals, to bring them out to public, and this way, when the goals become officially part of the record at the next Board meeting, you'll have had a month to absorb them. And these will be the district goals going forward the rest of this year and in 2014, 15. However, prior to that presentation, I just want to make a few notes, housekeeping notes for anyone who's interested. The, obviously, this has been a very snow-filled, wintery, winter season, and to this date, we've had six school closings due to snow. We've had two days that are built into the school year as excess for snow days, and that means that we have four days that we have to account for still. One of the days that was actually built into the school year was Martin Luther King Day, but that was prior to the significant series of snowfalls that we had, so we weren't able to use that as a take-back day. So February 17th, President's Day, was the day where students were in school as one of the take-back days from the snow, and already on the calendar was April 14th as a take-back day, and that falls during the spring recess. In working with the Board and the OBEA, they've had, tentatively adopted, and they will formally adopt, at the adopt at the next, uh, at the March agenda, the following two dates, April 11th and May 23rd, which are previously scheduled and contractual to be half days, those will be full days of school. And while that does not keep in line with 182, 182 instructional days here in Olbridge, it does maintain the same teacher contact times. So, both those days, April 11th and May 23rd, will be full days of school once adopted by this Board of Education next month. What that does is, we've, since we had a snow day last week, leaves us with one more day to account for. And again, I'll continue to work with the Board and members of the OBEA, OBEA, and members and parents from the community to come up with a date and to resolve that answer to that question, hopefully have that at the March meeting as well as we amend the calendar. That may be a topic for conversation at the superintendent's forum. The forum is open to anyone. That'll be on February 26th at 7:00 P.M. The location to be disclosed, but, uh, keep up with the Olbridge website and my Twitter account, and the location will be put on there. I probably believe it'll be in the library of one of the two elemen, uh, two middle schools, and that'll be February 26th at 7:00 P.M. All right. The district goals for going forth for the remainder of this school year and the 2014-15 school year are as follows and proposed by this Board of Education. Goal number one, to improve, the improvement of educational opportunities for all students. Goal two, successful implementation of the Achieve New Jersey Teacher and Principal Evaluation Model. Goal number three, to develop a long-range plan to address enrollment, facility, and student needs in a fiscally responsible manner. Goal number four, to increase collaboration and communication with all stakeholders within Olbridge. And goal number five, and usually there's not five goals, usually it's limited to three or four, but this should be a goal of every year, and I assume it is because it's our number one priority, to ensure the safe and secure facilities for, for the learning environment for all students and staff. And that brings us to discussion, just to points of clarification on snow days. When we just, when we take into account a snow day, there's a few things we take into account. I briefly discussed this, um, at last month's meeting, but, you know, we, we reach out to municipal authorities here in town, either the mayor's office, the police department, our own transportation and facilities department, the county superintendent's office in other counties, and then looking at the NOAA and the other weather facilities that are out there. As an example, like today's storm was very brief, but it came at a very inopportune time and takes into account, into account certain things. When the storm was coming through, it began approximately 4:00 A.M. with significant snowfall and kept going through till 8:00 A.M., so it's right in the heart of the students' transportation and staff transportation time, and that's obviously our fifth goal, making sure that everyone's safe and secure. What it doesn't allow for, though, if we're going to have a full day of school, is the, the plowing of the parking lots, and that's because of two reasons. One, um, in the contract we have with our outside vendor, for fiscal reasons and the protection of their own equipment in our property, a plow blade cannot touch the asphalt until there's ex, in excess of two inches of snow on the ground. Otherwise, there wind up, you know, possible damage to their plow blades, damage to our parking lot, and a cost for that. And if we were to, say we just decided, well, we're going to override that, the plows do not start plowing until the snow stops. You don't want to start plowing and then have to come back again. So, the, the snow did not stop until 8:00 P.M., I mean, 8:00 A.M., and it takes approximately five and a half to six hours to do all 17 properties that we have. So, in order to do that prior to anyone coming in, we would have had to cancel the school for the day. So, we did our best to ensure the safety of our staff and students, and I appreciate everyone's patience as we forge through this very difficult winter, and hopefully we've seen the end of it. I said to Ms. Andriani that if it works, that this meeting, I would have wore a, a Lual shirt to ward away the winter, and she challenged me to it. So, I just wore spring colors today to hopefully that'll push back the winter, and hopefully that was the end of our snow. Going forward from this presentation, we're going to have progress towards goals, and Assistant Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Kathleen Hoker, is going to do a presentation about where we are with one of our goals. That is, uh, goal number two is a successful implementation of the Achieve New Jersey, which is the Teacher and Principal Evaluation Model. Dr. Hoker?
Good evening. Achieve New Jersey was established, uh, has established multiple measures to evaluate our staff and our administrators. What that means in Olbridge is we will complete 2,000, approximately 2,560 observations on staff this school year. Those observations take place generally between October 1st and April 1st. That's compared to just over 1,000 that was required last year. The three, the superintendent and the, our two assist, uh, the two assistant superintendents will complete over 100 observations in 16 facilities. Approximately one-third of the observations require pre-conferences, and all of the observations require post-conferences to review the results of the observation. All non-tenured observations require multiple observers, and what that means is we have teachers who, in, for example, in an elementary school that there's one administrator, have to have an administrator come from another building, which has to be coordinated. The central administration did take on all of the non-tenure teachers in our elementary schools to eliminate or reduce some of our principals from having to leave their buildings. There have been over 100 mid-year evaluations completed on all non-tenure teachers. By November 15th, teachers were required to submit two student growth objectives. The final progress toward these growth objectives will be determined in April. Mid-year check-ins were just completed or in, in, due to the snow or in the process of being completed. Every teacher had to submit a form indicating the progress toward goals, and the principals had to sign off on the form. Teachers in testing grades four through eight will receive SGP's. SGP's compare the change in a student's growth from one year to the next. SGP's are derived from the New Jersey ASK and ultimately will be provided by Park Data. SGP's for this testing year will not be available from the state until January 2015. The summative evaluation score for teachers includes the average of all of the observations and the average of their SGO scores. This information will be calculated and submitted to the state by August 4th. The administrators will follow similar, a similar process. Their summative evaluation will include the principal practice, which is their observations, and principals will be observed twice by central administration, and non-tenured principals are observed three times. The observations are weighted, and they're, they count as 30% of the overall evaluation for principals. There's another piece which principals are rated on and includes, and is rated at 20% of their evaluation, and that is how they are implementing Achieve New Jersey, how they are utilizing the new evaluation system and the observations. There's a rubric in order to determine their progress on that. Principals also receive a score which equates to 10% of their overall evaluation, um, on the average SGO score of the building. So, all of the teachers' SGO, student growth objectives, receive a score for the building, and that is part of the principal's evaluation. In addition, a principal whose school has teachers in grades four through eight receives an SGP score, which is also part of their evaluation. And principals in every building have written building goals. That is also 10% or 40%, depending on whether, whether they're an SGP school or not. And now, now I've thrown you completely off with the SGP and the SGO and all the percentages, but what this means is we have multiple measures in place to evaluate both our teachers and our administrators. Everything will be submitted to the state in August, and something else that we have in place is working with the School Improvement Network. All of our observations done are, are completed using the School Improvement Network. We can now run reports that give us information on the strengths and weaknesses of the staff in our buildings, so we can determine which of the domains our teachers are most effective or least effective. We can take that information, we can use it to develop our professional development plans with staff, we can use it to determine strengths and weaknesses within the buildings and within the district, and we're going to take that information, um, put it together and create a plan for professional development moving forward. We can also identify our highly effective teachers. We can recognize them and utilize them to turnkey training on instructional strategies that they've been effective with in the classroom, and we can provide support for the teachers that require it. I think I covered it all. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hoker.
Dr. Hoker, Mrs. Sididino, thank you very much. Mr. Mara, any correspondence?
No, there's no correspondence.
Okay. Committee reports, board members?
I, I would just like to mention that we recently scheduled the next finance meeting for next week, Thursday, the 25th, I believe it is. Um, the, oh, Tuesday, Tuesday the 25th, sorry. Tu, it is the 25th though, right? Yeah. Tuesday the 25th, the public portion will begin at 7:30 P.M.
There's also a long-range planning committee meeting scheduled for this Thursday at 7:00 P.M. in line with the third goal, district goal. We will be looking at housing, past, present, and future, new construction housing, the thing that most impacts us, uh, school growth, and we'll also be looking at enrollments, past, present, and future. That'll be the primary function.
Thank you, gentlemen. Anyone else? Meetings coming up? Past meetings? No? Okay. Facilities use, everybody should have a listing of what's being used and when? Okay. Hearing of the residents, agenda items only. Anybody like to speak? No one? Okay, on to action items. Policy, can I have a motion to move policy? Item one?
Mongan will move policy.
Second?
I'll second.
Roll call, Mr. Mara?
Discussion?
Oh, discussion, I'm sorry. Any discussion?
Yeah, I would, uh, since this is 121 pages of more than anybody really wants to read, I would ask the attorney just to get some comment on some of the facts that many of these are mandated policies from the state.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Weber. As we discussed in January at the public meeting, the Achieve NJ laws and regulations that Dr. Hoker just walked you through a little bit, uh, those new state regulations give rise to these board policies and board regulations. They speak in terms of the evaluation and observation of all of your staff members, the superintendents, teaching staff members, uh, non-tenured support staff members, everybody is in these eight different categories in here. In addition, the change in the tenure laws, the tenure hearing laws and regulations specifically, give rise to the revisions of the certification of tenure charges, which is policy 3144 and the accompanying regulations. So, essentially, what the 140 pages that, I know you read line by line repeatedly, uh, to summarize them, what they do is they implement changes in state law and regulations over the last year. They are mandated, uh, and they're lengthy, but they're important things that make sure that you're in line with state mandates.
Anyone else, discussion? Roll call, Mr. Mara, please.
Dunn?
Yes.
Mongan?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Porcelli?
Yes.
De Prima?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, athletics, uh, just one item also. Have a motion to move athletics, please? Somebody?
Done will make a motion to move athletics, item one.
Second?
Ma.
Sorry, Nancy. Uh, Mr. Mara, roll call, please? Uh, discussion, I'm sorry. I keep forgetting that far, you guys got to bear with me. It's my first time. Discussion, anyone? Okay. Roll call, Mr. Mara?
Mongan?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Porcelli?
Yes.
De Prima?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, curriculum, items one through 21. Can I have a motion to move curriculum, items one through 21, please?
Mongan will move.
Singh will second.
Okay, got you this time. Any discussion? Items one through 21? Anyone? Roll call, Mr. Mara?
Mongan?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Porcelli?
Yes.
De Prima?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Motion's pass.
Okay, finance, items one. Thank you. Mr. Foughton, items one through seven, including the addendum. Can I have a motion, please?
Done will make a motion, finance, items one through seven.
Second, please?
Mongan will second.
Any discussion?
Uh, yes, Mrs. De Prima, uh, there, there's a reimbursement to a board member. The records will reflect that that board member abstained from that vote, and also, Mr. Weber, who's the, who was on the OBMUA, will abstain from voting on purchase order 404671.
Do I have to separate?
No. The record will reflect.
Okay, um, okay. And, uh, roll call, Mr. Mara?
Singh?
Yes. I thought he, he's abstaining.
He's just, he's just, he's just abstaining for his reimbursement. Weber?
Yes.
Porcelli?
Yes.
De Prima?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Mongan?
Yes.
Motion's pass.
Okay, non-certificated personnel office, items one through two. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Porcelli will second.
Any discussion? Roll call, Mr. Mara?
Weber?
Yes.
Porcelli?
Yes.
De Prima?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Mongan?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Motion's pass.
There is nothing under non-certificated personnel operational, so non-certificated personnel other, items one through nine. Can I have a motion, please?
Done will move non-certificated personnel other, items one through nine.
Second?
Mongan will second.
Discussion? Roll call, Mr. Mara?
Weber?
Yes.
Porcelli?
Yes.
De Prima?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Mongan?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Motion's pass.
Okay, certificated personnel, items one. Okay. I, certificated personnel, items one through 16, including the addendum and the amendment, uh, what would you say about the last part? The administrative corrections. Okay, thank you. Have a motion to accept? Move, I'm sorry?
Done will move certificated personnel, items one through 16 with the addendum.
Second?
Porcelli will second.
Any discussion? Uh, you guys are making this easy. Uh, roll call, Mr. Mara?
Porcelli?
Yes.
De Prima?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Mongan?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Motion's pass.
Non-certificated personnel transportation, only one item. Have a motion to move? Please?
Mongan will move.
Second?
Weber will second.
Discussion? Roll call, Mr. Mara?
De Prima?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Mongan?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Porcelli?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, item 25. Donna's not the only one that could read Roman numerals, by the way. Supplies, equipment, and services, items one, two, and three. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Mr. Weber, and a second?
Singh will second.
Separation, please.
Okay.
Separate one and two.
Separate one and two. Anybody else? So, discussion on one and two?
Um, yes, Mr. De Prima. Motion one and motion two are related to the Board of Education and Motion one and motion two are related to the Board of Education entering into a shared service agreement with the Hinella Board of Education. Little background information on this board. The Hinella borough is a borough in Camden County that is less than a quarter mile in size. In its 2010 census, it had 870 people in its population, and that was a decrease of 159 from its 2000 census. In 2010, the Star Ledger had an article on towns that should not exist. This is a town that takes state aid, that has a school district that does not operate, refuses to consolidate and share services. It operates in a double-wide trailer as its municipal building, and its mayor advised the Star Ledger that any effort to consolidate would be dead on arrival. Since 2006, the state of New Jersey has been encouraging school districts and municipalities to consolidate and share services for the benefit of all of its residents. This district refuses to do that. Resolution, the resolution under number one, the E1, would be giving a five-year, according to the document, a five-year agreement of this board to have them enter, to enter into an agreement with the Hinella to purchase or obtain services or supplies for this district as its lead agency. The second motion would give a 10-year agreement for them to provide not only services but office staffing if needed, as well as joint purchasing and material. Now, you might, there was a lengthy discussion at the agenda meeting on this subject, and the representative of Hinella appeared before the board, a Mr. Joseph Giambri, and he stated that they received their authorization from the state to be a cooperative in November of 2013, and that they could provide cheaper prices for the Old Bridge District because of their ability to, in South Jersey, to get cheaper prices for the district. And examples were given that they could do that. Right now, this district has many cooperatives. They have Ed Data for supplies, they have Middlesex Regional Ed Service Commission, we use state contracts, and we have, Mr. Mauer has added another cooperative this year, Hunterton. These are all established cooperatives that have a proven track record. For example, the Ed Service Commission provides us, we're in a gas, we get our natural gas, we're in a cooperative with them, and the 2013 Old Bridge School District audit shows that we had, we've underspent our gas budget by almost, by over $500,000 in savings, big savings. We use state contracts, an example of a state contract we use is for our copiers. We've saved almost $200,000 per year with using the state contract for our copiers in the district. The Ed Data, they've been historically the cheapest provider of paper, and the school district uses a lot of paper. And so we do have other avenues for us, rather than using a non-operating school district to act as our lead agency. The other point I'd like to make is Mr. Giambri, he spoke, and he said he is the board secretary. Online, the Hinella audit, and the last audit that was available online was for the 2012 school year, that audit was signed by a Joseph Giambri. I don't know if it's the same Joseph Giambri that's now the board secretary, but it was signed as a Joseph Giambri as a superintendent. That audit showed that this district had a deficit. That means that the revenue it had was not enough to cover the expenses it had. That was in 2012. Then in 2013, they received authorization from the state to be a purchasing service. To me, that's not a proven track record. To me, as a board member, I cannot vote for this partnership, because I believe that we could do better, and we have done better, and we have other avenues available to us that we are currently using. So, you know, every board member has to vote their conscience. I, in my good conscience, cannot support this. And even if, notwithstanding any other things I've said, if they could provide cheaper costs, sometimes, you know, we're a school district, we're not a for-profit agency. Some of the examples cited were services such as occupational and physical therapy. Well, sometimes you don't want the cheapest price for that service, because if you have a therapist that's providing a service, and they know the children, and they're familiar with them, and the children feel comfortable with them, and the special services directors, past or present, say, can we keep this, can we find savings elsewhere? Well, that's what you do. You save where you can, where it won't hurt the children. And paper, and getting utilities in cooperatives, that's where you save, and it's been proven that we have done that. And also, every January at the REorg meeting, this board approves the cooperatives for the year. I cannot approve a cooperative for five years or 10 years that will bind future boards. There are three board members up for election every year. Who knows next January if those board members would want to be in this cooperative? And I know there's a 30-day, you could get out of it in 30 days, but I can't understand why we would want to do that for a 10-year period or a five-year period, and with a district that wasn't a deficit and is small, has just gotten its purchasing agreement from the state without a proven track record, when we have other options available and they have been working very well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Mongen. Mr. Mauer, can I just ask something, going by what Nancy was saying? After our discussion the other night, please correct me if I'm wrong, but if we approve this, we are under no obligation to anything. It is, there is no cost involved. It's kind of just like another option for shopping.
Yeah, it was, it was made clear that there's absolutely no cost to the district, there's no risk to the district. It just gives us an opportunity to get additional quotations for products that we utilize. Mrs. Mongen was incorrect in saying that we suggested using them for OTPT services. What we suggested was that we would use them for possibly purchasing paper and custodial supplies, and to use them as an E-rate consultant. So, her example was not correct, but there is no commitment to use them for anything other than to compare their prices to the co-op that we belong to. And when I came to the district, we belonged to only two co-ops. We now belong to five co-ops, and we have saved hundreds of thousands of dollars in one year by using additional co-ops.
One more question, if I may. Mrs. Mongen also had a point of something cheaper isn't always the best, and of course, our students, we're not gonna, you know, just go for a cheaper way on our students. If Hinella came in with a better price than somebody else but inferior service, are we obligated to use them at that point?
There is no obligation to use them for any particular thing. I agree that with OTPT services, those are specialized services where some of these professionals have been with the same children for a number of years, and I certainly would not recommend changing that against the advice of our special ed team or child study team. But here, we're simply looking at this in terms of a, to use an analogy, another supermarket where we can buy products from that will save the taxpayers of this town money for those products.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Just one other point. Having another venue to purchase from is all well and good, but if the venue goes under because they have a record in the past of being in a deficit, having the lowest price is meaningless. And the example for OTPT was not that Hinella would provide them, but it was an example that was given at the agenda meeting that the Ed Service Commission couldn't provide. And I just wanted to state that there are reasons behind every decision.
The only, the only issue here is, is the opportunity to provide another alternative to save the taxpayer Old Bridge money in purchasing products for the district. If, and if, if and when we do, if we join this, and it's entirely up to the board, when we purchase products through this cooperative, we don't purchase the products from the co-op, we purchase the product through the co-op with the vendors of the co-op. So if WR Grace is a member of that co-op, we make a deal with WR Grace to supply those products to us at that price. So the fact that Hinella, which is a school district, which I've never heard in my, in my experience, that a school district has gone out of business, is really not relevant to the discussion, because we would be dealing with the vendors that are part of that co-op and not relying on Hinella to provide those services.
Question. Is there any issue with modifying the term in the agreement for two years, say, for example, and at that point?
I believe both, both agreements are structured as per directives from the Department of Consumer Affairs. However, either deal, either the shared service deal or the co-op purchasing deal is cancelable within 30 days. So as Mrs. Mongen said, it would be voted on in January each year, and all co-ops are there to be voted on. If there's one that's objectionable, especially to me, if I have found that the prices are not what we expect, we may terminate it, but there's really no reason to terminate. By joining the co-op, it just makes it available for us to purchase. It's no commitment whatsoever. But we can cancel it with 30 days' notice at any time during any year with any board.
Mr. Vice President, I have a question for our attorney. Is there any legal issue here with entering an agreement with Hinella regarding our purchasing opportunities?
No, no. Under the Uniform Shared Services and Consolidation Act, they are eligible to do this. Whether or not to join with them in this cooperative effort is certainly a call for the members of this board. But there is nothing illegal about either, neither the term, nor the existence of the cooperating purchasing agreement, nor the shared services agreement. It is all specifically authorized by law.
Thank you, Mr. Pardon.
Anyone else? Okay, so now we vote on number three first, correct?
Vote on numbers one and two first.
Oh, I took the separation. Okay, okay. Mr. Mauer, roll call on separation number one, please.
Dunn?
Yes.
Mongen?
No.
Singh?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Porcelli?
Yes.
DePrima?
Yes.
Motion number one passes.
Number two?
Dunn?
Yes.
Mongen?
No.
Singh?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Porcelli?
Yes.
DePrima?
Yes.
Motion two passes.
And finally, number three, please.
Dunn?
Yes.
Mongen?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Porcelli?
Yes.
DePrima?
Yes.
Motion three passes.
Okay, transportation, items one through five, can I have a motion, please? Okay, items number one through five, can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion, Mr. DePrima.
Thank you. Second?
Done will second, transportation.
Discussion? And roll call, please.
Mongen?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Porcelli?
Yes.
DePrima?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Motion's one through five pass.
Thank you. Miscellaneous, one through four, motion, please?
Done will move miscellaneous, items one through four.
And second?
Mongen will second.
Discussion? And roll call.
Mongen?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Porcelli?
Yes.
DePrima?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Motion's one through four pass.
Board Secretary and Board Business, okay. Hearing of the residents, wow, this one, quick. On anything? Are you, Jill? Oh, I thought you were raising your hand, I'm sorry. Oh, okay, please.
I just had two things that I wanted to bring to the board's attention and to the attention of anybody who's still watching. The PTA President's Council is having their annual scholarship dinner dance on Friday, March 7, from 7 to 11, at the Reception Center at St. Clement's. The cost of the ticket is $50, that includes beverages, buffet dinner, music, dancing. We have a 50/50, a tricky tray, and it's a chance to get out and enjoy an evening of fun. And all proceeds go towards senior scholarships for our graduating seniors. If anybody's interested in purchasing a ticket from the public, they can contact Kim Kastain at Central Administration. Second thing I just wanted to bring to everybody's attention is that our last President's Council meeting, an idea, I guess, was brought forward by Mr. DePrima. There are surrounding towns that are having fundraisers to raise money for Mikey Nichols, who's the Monroe student who was so severely injured in a hockey game, I think, back in January. And we voted to come together as a community, all the schools, and put on one fundraiser. We're going to have a Friendly's Night on Monday, actually Nights, on Monday, March 3rd and Tuesday, March 4th. The manager at Friendly's has agreed to actually extend the hours. The hours for this event are four to 10, and Friendly's will be donating 50%, I'm sorry, not 50, 15% of each male meal back to Pray for Mikey 23. That's it.
Thank you, Mrs. Calley. Once again, two very worthwhile functions. All the board members also have tickets, if anybody's interested in Partners in Education Dinner Dance. If you don't buy it from me, I will be putting them on eBay eventually, so. Mrs. Calley, has something else?
I think I object to that last one. I just wanted to let everybody know that the Friendly's fundraiser, as well as the President's Council, is open to the public, but for the Friendly's fundraiser, you don't need a ticket, you don't even need the flyer. You just need to go in, and when you're placing your order with your waitress or waiter, just say that you're here for Mikey Nichols.
And as much as I'd like to take credit for the idea, it was just presented to me to present the President's Council, so, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we have one other new item on the agenda, old business and new business. I'd like to think that this was put on a little bit because of me, because during my first year, a lot of people have approached me with different issues and questions and things they wanted to say, excuse me, and I never knew when I was supposed to ask them. So I think this is where those type of items from board members or administrators would be best put to use. Does anybody have any old business they'd like to discuss? Okay, any new business? Okay, so much for the new.
Well, Mr. DePrima, I don't want to waste your time. You went through that beautiful introduction. Just real fast, I'd like to remind the members of the community, we're working in partnership with the Old Bridge Police Department. A few of our neighborhoods that have narrow streets, the buses that transport our children have been having difficulty getting through there because cars are parked on both sides of streets and haven't been moved because of snow. If you do your best to get your cars off the road so their streets can be cleaned. I've been working with Don Sissio and Chris Marion, and they've received a lot of positive praise from members of the community, as in certain neighborhoods where streets were clean so the students can actually walk on the, on the road and still have cars pass by, because some of the narrow roads have become so narrow that only one car can fit at a time down the road, and other cars have to back up just to get out of there. So, these are all trying times with all the snow that we have, and it's all going to melt away somewhere soon, and hopefully not into your basement. So, best wishes and continue safety.
Thank you, Mrs. Sedino. I'm actually glad you brought that up, because I was, I received an email today, on my personal email, asking a question about busing and with the scheduling of the delayed openings and stuff, that type of things. I asked Mr. Mauer, and he's gonna just look for a better answer than, well, for an answer for this parent, just to put them at ease on how our buses function. an answer for his parents, just to put them at ease on how our buses function during this weather, and I guess that's it. And our new business, Mrs. Kibler, Dr. Kibler. I know Mrs. Adriani asked you to speak sometime, do you have anything?
Thank you, Mr. De Prima. I would just like to announce that on March 13th, we will be having Parent University, and our brochures will be going out shortly, and they will be on our website, and we certainly encourage everyone to sign up for workshops. It'll be a great evening, and anyone that has attended in the past know that it's very worthwhile and that it certainly supports all our students with our parent partnership. So please be on the lookout for the brochure on the website, and there will be hard copies at the public library, and also there will be some in each school. Thank you.
Okay, good of the order. I guess we'll start, Mr. Porcelli?
Okay. I just have a couple of things. I'll start with the snow, on the back of Mr. Sedidino's comments regarding the snow. One thing I wanted to bring up, I want to ask the people of the community to be sure to clear their walkways, especially if they're near a school. Lately, I've seen a lot of the children kind of sliding on their way into school, and, you know, we do as much as we can to ensure that the students are safe, but we can only obviously clean up the property of the schools. But the children are walking down the street, some of them have to go out into the streets because some sidewalks haven't been shoveled at all. The crosswalks, if you're on a corner near a crosswalk, if you can clear it out by the crosswalks, I think it was Monday morning, I was even driving by one school, and the crossing guard, an older gentleman, was out there actually shoveling the crosswalk before school started to clear it for the students. And if we can maybe speak to the township as well, about the plows going around. This morning, as I was walking my daughter into school, and a lot of kids were going into the street because a lot of the sidewalks were not yet shoveled, and there was a plow that was going around, and he was doing well over 25 miles an hour. And I understand they have a lot of work to do to clear those roads in this township, it's a big township, but there is a lot of small children walking around the streets, and the other point is, by a lot of the driveways, obviously, is people are piling up to snow. A young child can just, like, run out from there in a car, or especially a plow is never going to see them run out. So if we can all just kind of pitch in and do our best to clear it, make it a little bit safer for the kids getting to school. The other thing I wanted to mention was Read Across America is coming up, and anybody that knows me knows that I'm a big supporter of parent participation in our schools. I've thanked Mr. Sedidino and the administration when they opened up the schools this year to allow parents to come in and view their classes and so on, and obviously, it's a different world that we're living in, so we have to be considerate of the policies and the rules that are set forth, not only by Central Administration, but I know a lot of the building principals set their own rules and guidelines for how they're going to allow parents to come into the buildings. And please respect that, understand that it's just for the safety of all of our children. I know everybody, you know, likes to get in and see their own child, but please follow the guidelines, make sure that they're aware that you're coming in, and that if they have a special time to sign up, that you take that time and sign up so that they're aware of who's coming into the buildings. But with that said, I encourage everybody to participate as much as possible. I know it's difficult for some parents that work and don't have the flexibility to be able to be there during the day, but I encourage everybody to try and get in. I know the children, especially the elementary grades, really love to see their parents come in and read to them. Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin. Mr. Dunn?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Firstly, I want to apologize for missing the last board meeting, which was on Thursday, January 23rd. I had a pre-planned getaway with my son for a dad-and-son weekend to go to a football game, and we had a fantastic time. So I do sincerely apologize for not being here, but with the meeting being delayed and postponed because of the weather, obviously, I was not able to be here. With that said, I'm very compelled to just discuss some concerns that I have. I got a phone call from a few friends that my name is being discussed throughout the township and online and among people within the town, and quite frankly, I was appalled that people would bring me and my wife into this scenario about going away with my son. And what's troubling is people can't mind their own business, and they feel that Rich Dunn got preferential treatment from the administration, that his wife was able to go with him to Hawaii for a vacation. And quite frankly, I am very upset about it. At no time did my wife ever get preferential treatment from this administration. She follows the rules just like everyone else. And quite frankly, I am going to encourage and appeal to the public and my fellow board members, if they have a concern or question concerning myself or my wife and what she's doing and what I'm doing, please come see me. Do not start rhetoric, do not start innuendo in the public, it's unfair and unjust. So from this point forward, I'm appealing to the public. If you have a question concerning myself or my family, please come to me. I'd be more than happy to discuss it with you. I'm a very friendly person, and I will tell you how it is. And quite frankly, at no time did we receive any preferential treatment. So, with that said, I want to move forward to more positive things. Number one, I want to thank the administration for making the very difficult calls regarding snow and closings and delayed openings. I think they've done a fantastic job in the real estate world. I know how difficult it is to make decisions of that nature, and I think that the administration has been on the mark. This morning, they could have very easily closed the schools, but they decide to have a delayed opening, and the weather improved, where the afternoon transportation was not affected. Secondly, I want to echo what Board Member Porcelli said about Read Across America. It's a very, very positive thing to go into your child's school and to discuss and read to children. I've been invited to go to three different schools, I'm trying to determine which ones I'm going to go to, but I'm going to try to hit them all. But we encourage reading. Reading's important, and we need to endorse and ensure our children read a book every evening, or read a little bit each evening, because it's going to make them that much better reading. So with that all said, I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. It's a very quick meeting. Thank you, Mr. Vice President. This is one of the most efficient and quick meetings that we've had in a long time, and I see that we'll be out of here by nine o'clock, so I'm going to end my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. I hope you and your son enjoyed the game, truly. Mrs. Mangan?
I just have a brief public service announcement. It's been a long, cold, snowy winter, excuse me, but spring is coming, and March 9th, we spring ahead, and our clocks will move forward, and we'll lose an hour's sleep but gain an hour of daylight, so.
Mr. Singh?
I just want to echo with Mr. Dunn that, actually, I want to give A-plus to Mrs. Sedidino for taking care of all the snow and stuff and communicating with the people. He woke me up at 5:00 this morning, which is good, and I think they have done a very good job keeping our kids safe, so I really appreciate it. And the other thing is recognizing that girl from Afghanistan was a really good thing, because being close to that country where I come from and the culture that I know, to encourage a girl who was doing something which is not possible over there was a great thing to do. I really applaud that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Singh. Mr. Weber?
Good of the order, nothing.
Okay, well, thank you all for bearing with me tonight, Mrs. Adriani. On behalf of Mrs. Adriani, thank you. Thank you for myself. You know, I had a few little bumps there, but it's my first time. I'd like to echo what everybody else said, Mr. Sedidino and his team, I think they've done a phenomenal job in making these calls with the weather. I think it's six for six now, or seven, I don't even know, but.
History of Malamita.
You've been right every time, so congratulations. I feel bad, your Twitter account will probably die down when the spring comes, but.
I'm welcome, man.
And lastly, to our student, Sehar, again, thank you so much. That was a beautiful presentation, and we are very proud to have you here. I guess motion to adjourn. I guess there's no discussion on an adjournment, right? So, roll call, please.
Porcelli?
Yes.
De Prima?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Mangan?
Yes.
Singh?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Motion passed.[1780.08]